All right. Good evening, everybody. Give a couple of minutes to settle in here. Welcome to the regular session of the San Gabriel City Council. The time is 6:41 PM and I will call the regular session to order. Tonight, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Costanzo.
If everyone would please stand. Please write "Him" over your heart and repeat after being. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey. Thank you all for being here tonight. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pooh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Menchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Costanzo.
Here.
Councilmember Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Liao.
Here.
All right, approval of agenda order. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, actually, all right. We'll have a motion from Councilmember Harrington and second from Councilmember Liao. Any objection? Seeing none, the approval, I mean, the agenda order is approved. Presentations. So, tonight is a special night, so thank you all for being here tonight. We've got a couple of recognitions of some longtime business owners in the city. And the first one on our agenda here is recognition of La Gardena Meat Market. And I see the family here this evening. You know, on July 31st, La Gardena closed its doors for the last time. And, you know, the contributions that the family and the business have made to the community have been tremendous over the years. And we wanted to make sure we honored them to recognize those contributions. So, let me read the proclamation. There, I understand there are other members from other offices who are here to present some certificates as well. So, after we've done our proclamation, I'll call upon some of those other representatives to also present their recognitions for the family. Whereas Emiliano Orpeza began his small business of La Gardena Meat Market in 1994 and served the San Gabriel community faithfully from day to night, Monday to Sunday, for over 25 years. And whereas the La Gardena Meat Market has been a blessing for the Orpeza family and they have established great friendships and relationships throughout the San Gabriel community. Whereas Emiliano Orpeza has witnessed the children of the San Gabriel community grow into exceptional young adults. And whereas Emiliano Orpeza and the La Gardena Meat Market contributed to the San Gabriel community by proudly sponsoring local events and youth teams in San Gabriel, including Gabrielino High School for over 20 years. Whereas Emiliano Orpeza will open and close the doors of La Gardena Meat Market on July 31st, 2019. I, Jason Pooh, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Denise Menchaca, Councilmembers Julie Costanzo, Chin Ho Liao, and John R. Harrington, do hereby recognize Emiliano Orpeza for his dedicated service to the San Gabriel community and congratulate him on his retirement. Let's give him, please, a round of applause. So, once again, you know, we want to make sure, you know, we wanted to recognize and honor your contributions and service to the community. Would you like to say a few words?
Gracias.
He says, "Thank you."
Quiero dar las gracias a la Ciudad de San Gabriel.
He'd like to thank the City of San Gabriel.
Hace 25 años empezamos con un sueño.
Twenty-five years ago, they began with a dream.
Empezamos con mi familia chica.
Small family, large family now.
Muchas gracias. Fue muy, muy bendecido para mí trabajar en esta ciudad.
He's very grateful, very appreciated, to serve in a city like this and he's having a difficult time with it emotionally.
Y siempre vamos a tener la Ciudad de San Gabriel en nuestro corazón.
He's always going to have the City of San Gabriel in his heart.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
And wait, Mr. Orpeza. Mr. Orpeza, would the council please join me in presenting this proclamation to Mr. Orpeza and the family if they'd like to come up, you know, for the presentation? We're also fortunate to have some representatives from our other local elected officials. First on the list would be Field Supervisor Cindy Lee from Congresswoman Judy Chu's office to present a certificate from Congresswoman Chu's office.
Good evening. On behalf of Congresswoman Judy Chu, I just want to present a certificate of congressional recognition to La Gardena Meat Market for your 25 years of incredible success here in the city as well as the greater community. So, on behalf of Congresswoman Judy Chu, I want to present the family with the certificate.
And also District Director Giselle Sorial from Senator Susan Rubio's office.
Emiliano Orpeza, on behalf of Senator Susan Rubio, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for your dedication and for your commitment and investment in San Gabriel for 25 years. You've left a lasting legacy in the community and thank you for creating a market that welcomed everyone and we honest, we wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. And I'd love to present this to you.
And last but certainly not least, Assistant Field Deputy Christian Daly from Los Angeles County 5th District Supervisor Catherine Barger's office. Please welcome Mr. Daly.
All right. Good evening, San Gabriel, and to the Mr. Mayor and to the City Council, the City Manager. It's a pleasure for me to be here on behalf of LA County Supervisor Catherine Barger. As far as just hearing just a bit about the Orpeza family and Mr. Orpeza, on behalf of the supervisor, I'd like to say thank you. Thank you for all that you've done for this community, the things that we know of and the things that we don't. Thank you for bringing your dream here and having it here and growing it here in San Gabriel and also the 5th District. With that, as far as your doors may be closing, but the doors of our hearts and our memories are not closing. We will always remember as far as the lasting impact that you've had and as far as, as you said, you opened up your doors for us to become your family and you will always be family here. I have some certificates for you, your family, and also to recognize your business.
There you go. So, you see Mr. Orpeza and family, you know, with so many people counting on you, you need to still make that carne asada somehow available to the public. And tonight is another celebration of another, of another market here in San Gabriel. And, you know, we know, we're known now for a lot of our food. You can see it starts from the mom and pop shops that, you know, that the community has. This recognition is for Joey Claro, who recently passed, I'm not Joey, sorry, Frank Claro, who recently passed away. He's been the owner of Claro's Market, Claro's Italian Markets on Valley for, well, almost, almost 100 years? It's like 72? Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, the business is still going strong thanks to the family and, and it's one of the, you know, one of the businesses that has also always been involved in civic life here in the city and contributed much to the community. So, we have a proclamation here to honor the Claro's Italian Markets as well. Whereas Frank J. Claro was born in Los Angeles on January 27th, 1930, and is survived by his three children and their spouses, five grandchildren and six great-grandchildren. And whereas he is one of the founders of Claro's Italian Markets and worked with his family for most of his life. And whereas he was a kind and generous man who loved people and was very active in the Italian-American community. And whereas Frank was a proud member of Ramona Parlor Number 109, Native Sons of the Golden West, San Gabriel Valley Model A Restorers Club, Unico, the Garibaldina MB Society, the Sons of Italy, and the Historic Italian Hall Foundation. And whereas he was a remarkable man who served as a loving inspiration to his friends and family and will be missed by all who had the good fortune to have known him. Now therefore, I, Jason Pooh, Mayor of the City of San Gabriel, on behalf of the City Council, Vice Mayor Denise Menchaca, Councilmembers Julie Costanzo, John R. Harrington, and Chin Ho Liao, do hereby recognize Frank J. Claro for his dedicated contribution to San Gabriel and honor his memory. Joey, would you like to come up to say a few words, please?
Thank you. I'm, I'm not going to, well, I can tell you that my sisters are not ready to talk about, about this yet. And so, I'm here on their behalf. We have a very united, loving family. I think it's important for you to know that we're going to continue, they're going to continue with the business. I'm retired, but we're, we're going to carry on as a family. And I'm grateful for the recognition and the care and the love that you give, that you've given all of us. So, you haven't seen the end of it. We're going to be around. So, thank you, thank you so much.
May I stay up here? The council, please join me in presenting the proclamation. Okay. And, once again, Field Supervisor Cindy Lee from Congresswoman Judy Chu's office would like to present a certificate to the, to the Claro family. Please come on up, Cindy.
So, on behalf of Congresswoman Judy Chu, I have two certificates. One for Claro's Italian Market, just to celebrate the success, the seven decades of success for your small business and your family and hope for your business to continue to thrive and grow. And then, another certificate in memory of your father, Frank Claro, for his lifelong dedication to the City of San Gabriel. And our thoughts and the Congresswoman sends her regards as well with you and your family.
Thank you so much.
So, thank you to all the representatives from, you know, our other local, not just local, but state and federal elected officials for being here tonight. Shows how much, how much heart all of them have as well as the San Gabriel community has, you know, and we certainly appreciate you making time out of your busy schedules to recognize and honor some of the members of our community. Next is actually, we usually present the proclamation for the Walk to Los Angeles. It's otherwise known as Los Populadores. It's the annual celebration of our shared history with the City of Los Angeles where we recreate the walk that the settlers did from here, the San Gabriel Mission to El Pueblo. If I can get it right, please don't criticize my pronunciation. It's El Pueblo de Nuestra Señora, la reina de Los Angeles. And there's actually more to it than that, but that's the official title for now, right? All right. I'll work on it some more. And, but if we could, can we have Rebecca still come up to say a few words about the event? It's this Saturday and if you're interested, many of us are there at 6:00 AM or earlier. Staff is there even earlier to set up. So, we start off pretty much at the crack of dawn. It's a pretty fast pace to get to El Pueblo by, I think it's 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM when the festivities start down there. But Rebecca, please, tell us a little bit more about this annual event.
Well, you've actually done the walk. I've never actually done the walk. I start here at this end with the setup and then we meet you down in Los Angeles. But you're correct, it starts here at 6:00 AM at the mission and we'll have the kickoff ceremony and we hope that many of our council members will be able to be there and we'll have the blessing from the Father at the mission. And then, the walk will start and we will end up down in Los Angeles and have the ceremonies that City of LA has down there. And that's where the proclamation will actually be presented to the City of LA.
Great, thank you very much. And because we have an audience here, you know, remember, please remember, everybody, that the San Gabriel Mission here is the oldest standing structure in all of LA County and the birthplace of the region. And so, I oftentimes joke with Mayor Garcetti that they are our younger sister, which is, which is true. And he acknowledges that. I guess, you know, he tends to try to give us a little jab that it's okay if you want to be the older sister. But, but yeah, you know, the shared history is something we, we're coming up on 250 years of this, of this shared history, right? In a couple of years, will be 250th anniversary of the mission and La Fiesta. So, it's part of the core of our community here in San Gabriel. We hope you'll be able to join us. I know 6:00 AM is quite early, but if you can't make 6:00 AM here at the mission, then maybe go down to Alvera Street where El Pueblo is and help us celebrate, you know, with the City of Los Angeles down there. And that, those festivities start around?
It's about 9:30.
9:30?
Yeah.
Okay, 9:30 or 10:00. Again, you have to walk pretty quickly to get there, but you can also bike. You can also bike there, too. You'd be there and...
We aren't, we aren't...
No biking?
Not, not as part of our official ceremony. City of Los, yeah, there you go.
Spoken like an Angelino. Thank you, Rebecca. And yes, that's another special part of our history tonight. I mean, we've been talking about a lot of traditions and history with the, with the Orpeza family and the Claro family. And this Walk to LA is yet another, you know, one of the, part of the tremendous richness of our, of our community. Moving to more modern or recent, you know, developments, now we have Chief Harris with a report on Camp SG, which was, this is the first year that the Police Department and Chief Harris has organized a camp for middle school students during the summer. So, Chief Harris.
Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. I really am honored to be here for this particular occasion in that this is one of the things that we in the Police Department are exceedingly proud of. There are a lot of functions that police departments and other community engagement arenas kind of engage in. And so, we're not recreating the wheel here, but we are kind of fashioning a wheel that is unique to our, our car. And so, we're really enjoying being able to present these things to community and it's a very important element for us in our community engagement efforts. So, today I have for you less of a report and more of just bragging about what it is that these folks did that are standing behind me in uniform back here and some of the others who aren't represented here today. So, for those people in the audience, let me give you just a brief overview of what the camp was. We came together as a result of the strategic plan to develop other ways to reach out to every member in every facet of our community. And one of those ideas that we came up with, I'd like to say it was my idea, but it was the idea of several people within the organization and certainly with support from you folks sitting up at the dais, to get a camp to address those people on the front end of our community engagement piece. So, there are a lot of elements that deal with maybe the criminal element. There are a lot of elements that deal with all the various things that we need for engagement, business, community watch and all of those things. But we wanted to make sure we were doing something that, that kind of attacked this problem from the front end and get to people before they are, have access or to criminal activity or potential gang activity or any of those issues. And so, we want to get people to understand that they can come and hang out with cops and that we're just regular folks and really give them some other alternatives. And it was exceedingly successful. So, what we did was we came up with a way to select 20 middle school kids from Jefferson Middle School. It was actually done with a essay contest in cooperation with the school district and the people there at the school. And we were able to get 20 people that were initially probably not as motivated to go to camp as they were when they got there and had to come home and really wanted to go back to camp. So, it was a really good experience for them. But we had volunteers from the Police Department and the YMCA take these kids up to a camp that had about 140 kids total, I think. I think it was about 140 kids total, 20 of those being our kids. And then, we had our guys go up to the camp and we stayed there with them for, initially it was five days. And it was a good thing that happened up there was we had an opportunity to leave them up there for a few more days and we started calling the parents and all of the kids wanted to stay, right? They were homesick to begin with and then they, I guess they were homesick at the end, too. They didn't want to go home because they thought they'd be sick. So, it worked out really well. It was just an outstanding opportunity for us to kind of interact with these kids. We did everything from kayaking to, to rock climbing to hiking. There was one hike that was 14 miles long, seven miles in and seven miles out. So, they were serious about their outdoor activities. The weather was, it was hot, but we did some really good things. And the YMCA really shone out for these kids and really presented them with an opportunity to kind of grow. And we're looking to put this, this camp on every year, that's the goal. We started with 20 children. Next year, we're going to try and get it up to 40. It's all done with donations. And we had some, some people in the community, businesses, individuals, make some significant donations and we were able to take these kids without a dime coming out of city coffers. And so, it was really, really a cool event. The idea is to get it up to 80 ultimately, where we might be working with 40 mainstream and 40 at-risk kids to kind of combine them up at a camp with members of the Police Department, community services, and the other folks, and really build this camp into something special that is solely for those people in San Gabriel. So, we kind of glommed on to another group for this camp as it was our crawl before we walk moment. And hopefully, the next time, we're going to make it grow even more. So, I want to say first, before we show you the highlights, thank you folks for the authorization. Like I said, we couldn't do these things without somebody saying yes to us and it was a really good opportunity for us. And we're going to go ahead and show the video and enjoy.
Hello. I am Oswald White from the School Community Engagement Team Bureau and welcome to the month of August. This month, we are going to highlight Camp SG, which took place last month. The San Gabriel Police Department raised enough money to sponsor 20 boys and girls from middle school. Several men and women of the San Gabriel Police Department volunteered to be camp counselors. Here's a slideshow highlighting the camp. Here's a slideshow highlighting the camp. As you can see, the kids had a wonderful time during the week-long camp. The kids were involved in various activities such as hiking, archery, swimming, canoeing, and rock climbing. Furthermore, the San Gabriel staff were fortunate to team up with Alhambra Police Department, collectively taught the kids about anti-mole, teamwork, and how to be courteous and responsible. The boys and girls from Camp SG made friends and gave valuable life lessons. We look forward to having this event again next year. Thank you.
So Officer Woolwine said it all, and we're very grateful again to you for allowing us to do this. Some thank yous out to the staff members who participated, and most assuredly those who were fundraisers and our POAs, represented by the POA President Gil Magaña, who were active, very active in the fundraising effort, working together with the members of the Police Department to put this together. So it was a wonderful time, and we look forward to this time having a year to prepare for it, where we only had a few months to prepare for it last time, so it was outstanding. So, thank you very much, and I think that's it.
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. It's a wonderful program. Let's give them another round of applause. Thanks to the officers, too. Officer Woolwine, Magaña. Can you name some of the other officers and staff members who were actually up there?
As a matter of fact, off the top of my head, we had certainly Stacy, Dane, Stacy Gutierrez, Dane Woolwine, we had Gil Magaña, we had Shamir Gonzalez, myself, Julie Liu was there. Who else was there from our squad? Do you remember? Christine Nolasco was there. We had a few that came up and had to leave. They came before a short period of time and had to leave, but there were quite a few of us up there. And then we had the representatives from Alhambra that were also with us, and then all the YMCA reps. So it was a really good time. So we had a good, a lot of fun.
Great. Awesome. Good job. And Chief, I know you're up again next, but before we do the introduction of our new officer, I wasn't made aware of this previously, but I apologize to Giselle and to Christian. I understand that you have certificates for Mr. Claro as, as well, and if we can, let's, let's go back to, to do the presentation of those certificates. So, so first, Giselle Sorial from Senator Susan Rubio's office. And my apologies for the, you know, for the mix-up.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, and just...
Joey.
Yes, Joey. Just think, I experienced that loss as well, so I'm sorry that you joined this terrible club, but it seems that this gentleman has left an impact not only in the family, but the greater of San Gabriel. And personally, I actually shopped at, shopped at Claro's, and we got our martedilla. Claro's all the time growing up, and so even personally impacted my life as a, as a constituent in Arcadia, coming to, coming into the city to, to get our, to get our stuff that we needed for all our sandwiches every weekend. So, just on behalf of Senator Susan Rubio, and just know that this loss is felt by many. It's felt by so much, by your, by the family and by the community as a whole, but as one of the founders of Claro's Italian, Italian market, his generosity, kindness, and dedicated efforts were inspiring so many, to so many who met him. He was a proud and enthusiastic member of our community, and his life is an example of a life well-lived. He'll be forever missed.
Joey, wait, wait, wait. Mr. Christian Daly from Supervisor Catherine Barger's office.
Good evening again. And as far as, on behalf of the supervisor, we, when we heard as far as the passing of your father, we're deeply sorry, and we stand with you as far as, and, and offer our condolences. The Board of Supervisors meeting will be adjourned in your father's honor, and a, a memoriam certificate will be sent to you as well as your sister's. So as far as Claro's Italian markets, I know that at least there's three in our district. You have to look at the map again to see if any more popped up, but as was previously stated, is, you know, as far as it's, Claro's is a, you know, is a part of the community as far as, and so was your father. He was a staple here in San Gabriel. And as far as thinking about all of the things that he has done, again, that's documented and that's not. As far as, there's one thing that can't be erased is our, our memories. So as far as, though he has gone on, his memory, his legacy will still be here and will still be felt in, in the community. Not just as we look at the market, but as we look around and see his handiwork and different things around the city. So on behalf of the supervisor, again, our condolences, and the supervisors meeting will be adjourned in his honor, but we do have a certificate here to honor your, the business that your father helped found, so thank you again.
I just wanted to mention one thing. Of all the gifts my dad gave me, I think volunteering and helping other people was the most important one, and if it hadn't been for him the last twenty years, I wouldn't be doing what I do today. And I welcome keeping busy and helping the community, and I really do think a lot of that was from his spirit and his help showing me that it's important to all of us. And, and thanks again on my sister's behalf. They really would have liked to have come, and they're going to be seeing this tomorrow, so I'll take care of it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joey. And thank you to Cindy, Giselle, and to Christian for your heartfelt words. Please extend our thanks to, to the Congresswoman, Senator, and Supervisor on behalf of the City of San Gabriel for being here and, and helping to honor the memory of Mr. Claro, and also to celebrate, you know, the retirement of Mr. Oropeza. So, and apologies again for, for the mix-up in terms of, of the order. So, trying to keep back on, get back on a track, I'd like to invite Chief Harris back up again for the introduction of Police Officer Esther Z.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of Council, here we are again to shine a light on, on another of those beacons of diversity that we're bringing on to serve the members of this community. I'm very proud today to introduce to you our newest sworn officer, Esther C. She can come on up. Again, it's a beacon of our, of our efforts to kind of really delve into the diversity that's required in policing a community of this type. And fortunately for us, we've got a wonderful shining example here of a young lady who speaks both Mandarin and Cantonese, our only sworn officer who does such. We also have some of our non-sworn people, one who speaks Vietnamese, Mandarin, and Cantonese, to add that to the other languages that we're trying to build upon, including Armenian, Spanish, and of course, all of the dialects of English that we tend to bring in, right? But anyhow, this here's Esther C., and she is one of the folks who went through the academy and had nothing but glowing respect and marks given from her academy staff, but most importantly from her peers, who said that she was as hard-charging as they come, but as delicate as you need to be to be in, in law enforcement in this day and age. When I went through the academy back in nineteen eighty-something-ish, it was all about running, jumping, and making sure you put bad guys in jail. The academy back then was about four hundred and forty hours. The academy now is about nine hundred and sixty hours minimum, and it requires you to be everything other than what I just indicated to you. So you got to be social worker, you've got to be part of tourney, you've got to be part lifeguard, you've got to be a lot of different things. And based on the reports that we got from her academy class, staff, and peers, she is all of that and then some. So we are going to, or have gotten away from some of the, the regional, hire the best of the rest mentality, and we are starting to bring on some of the best of the best. And this is a glowing example of that standing right here before you. Let me get my specs on because I got to read this thing here. Esther grew up in Baldwin Park for the first twelve years of her life, along with her brother Joshua and her parents David and Pollyanna Lee. They eventually moved to Temple City, and she attended Temple City High School. There she was involved in the Christian Club and played for the basketball team. After high school, she attended the University of California Irvine and graduated with a bachelor's degree in psychology and social behavior and minded in education. Esther met her husband Sinlin in 2010, and he joined the Los Angeles Police Department in 2012. They got married in 2014, and in 2017, their twin boys Aaron and Zachary were born. Aaron and Zachary are healthy and happy toddlers who are the pride and joy of Esther and her, and her family. Growing up, Esther was involved in sports and earned a second degree, a black belt in Taekwondo. She was also involved in her church and still is attending the volunteer at the Chinese Bible Mission Church in Alhambra. She's significantly involved in the music ministry with the children at that church. Esther would not be here tonight, right now, without the support of her family and friends, and she would like to thank them for their constant love and prayers throughout her life. And she can't wait to serve this community that she grew up in, and she loves what the City of San Gabriel has to offer, the culture, the people, and of course, most of all, the food. She feels honored to be able to give back to this city that gave her so much, and tonight, after her swearing in, it'll be her Father David that pins on her badge. So if we could have her sworn in by the city clerk?
Is your name, please? State your name.
I, Esther Z.
Do you swear?
Do you swear?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic?
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I enter into this obligation freely?
That I enter into this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully?
And that I will well and faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
And if we can have her dad, David, come on up. David? David? And before we have Esther say a few words, if I could have the, the council come down and take a picture, if you'd be so kind.
All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to say thank you for allowing me to join and to the city, and like Chief Harris said, I grew up in the city and, you know, I've, I've, yeah, I grew up in the city. My church is around the corner, and, yeah, I just can't wait to give back to the city that I grew up in, that I've, that I've, that I've grew up in, that I've, you know, hung out with friends with, and currently where my family resides as well right now. Thank you very much.
All right. Welcome, Officer Z., and to the San Gabriel family, and thank you to you and your family for, you know, protecting and serving our community. We're looking forward to having you onboard. So that concludes our presentations, but before the family, the Oropeza family goes, I hope, I think, okay, we'll do a public comment. You know, after all, after all that, it's, it's kind of hard because it just feels like one big party, but we, we actually do have, you know, important issues to discuss on our, on our regular agenda. But now we have public comment. Would you please still first read the, you know, the introduction for public comment?
This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council cannot answer any questions or take any action until such time as the matter may appear as an item on a future agenda. In an effort to provide everyone with an opportunity to speak, please be aware that all public comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. You will receive a thirty-second warning as you approach the end of your time. As a reminder, please be respectful of all speakers regardless of the position they take on any items. If you wish to address the City Council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, first Sylvia Ramos.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, community, everyone here, and everyone here that I don't know personally under this roof. I'm representing myself and my husband Sylvia Ramos, live on Norwood. I just want to say a few words and thank you for allowing me. The Oropeza family are, weren't just business owners that owned a meat market, they were further much more than that. They were a family that actually opened their doors, and whenever you walked through the doors, it was a sense of culture, from the pan dulce to the Mexican candy to the, of course, the carne asada, which was marinated so well, and their pollo and their chicharrón, and it just, the list goes on. It's very sad to see someone of such integrity leave San Gabriel to close their doors. My husband and I were there when they actually shut their doors down, and we supported the family. But most importantly, I just want to share with you that Mr. Oropeza and his family and his wife Laura, that's not here, have been just so genuine and so authentic. I mean, we always made excuses to go there, whether it's to buy avocados, carne asada, or just to have a little chat. So I just want to share that a piece of the heart of San Gabriel is going, but as I shared with Mr. Oropeza, his, his legacy's going to stay, la legacia's going to stay. So I'm very humbled to be here to represent myself and many others that couldn't be here today, and just say thank you. And also, while I'm here, I just want to say our, our very condolences to the Claro family, to Clara and Bob, I didn't see them here, and congratulations, great job on the police officer. Now, in Spanish, real quick. Señor Oropeza? Le quiero dar, le quiero dar las gracias por una oportunidad de ser una gran persona para nosotros, mi familia, mis padres, y mis hijos, y mis parientes. Usted ha sido una persona muy magnífica, lo voy a extrañar mucho, pero estoy muy contenta para las nuevas puertas que se van a abrir extendidas de sangre y piel. Lo queremos mucho y gracias.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you. That concludes my, my speech.
Thank you, Sylvia. I really appreciate you adding to the, you know, recognition and celebration. Okay, next speaker's request card that I have here is from Mr. Fabian Valdez.
Good evening, Council members, and I want to begin by also thanking Mr. Oropeza. I was a relatively young officer, a lot more svelte, twenty-something years ago when I started, and I remember cruising down Sunset and Angelino and those streets, and Mr. Oropeza on more than one occasion would bring out his chicharrones, and I'd get out and say hello and visit his market, so it's, it's sad to see him leave, and I think his market represents more than just, more than just a market, it was a place where the, the locals would, would hang out. It was a, a community market. So, Mr. Oropeza, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Valdez. Thank you very much.
Yes, and so I'm actually here... Yes, and so I'm actually here to speak on behalf of La Casa. But I was, I was just taken back at all of the nice things that are going on tonight. But I'm here tonight in my role as one of the board members at the La Casa Community Center. La Casa has, La Casa is another institution that has been in San Gabriel for over 70 years. And its mission has been to help economically challenged families. La Casa provides services and helps in various forms, including distributing free food, providing low-cost and subsidized early education, parenting classes, hosting Alcoholics Anonymous meetings, and ESL courses. La Casa is in need of financial support and other resources in order to continue its mission of serving the less fortunate in San Gabriel. La Casa has a longstanding relationship with the city of San Gabriel and the San Gabriel Police Department, as evident in Vice Mayor Denise Munchak's current service as a board member at La Casa. I want to announce that La Casa is hosting its annual fundraising dinner on Thursday, October 10th, at 6:00 PM, at San Gabriel Hilton. Thank you, Ms. Costanzo, for doing that. I'm also reaching out to the community on behalf of La Casa, seeking support from those members of the community who can lend a helping hand. If anyone or any organization is interested in helping La Casa help needy families, please reach out, reach out to me or Vice Mayor Denise Munchak to discuss ways you can help support the mission. So, thank you.
Thank you, Captain Valdez. Um, let's see here, next is Mr. Brian Jones. Oh, wait, sorry, this is for Item 6A. Would you like to hold your comment until we actually consider that item?
Yes.
Okay. I'll bring you back at that, that time. Mr. Brandon Tran. Welcome to the San Gabriel City Council meeting.
Hello, my name is Brandon Tran and I am a representative of the Stand Against Plastic Straws nonprofit. We are a student-led organization aiming to reduce plastic pollution by encouraging businesses and consumers to use biodegradable and reusable straws instead of plastic straws. We're supported nationally in New York, Massachusetts, Maine, and California. Despite the ban on plastic straws in California within restaurants unless they are requested, there is still commonly purchased in stores as well as used by restaurants when requested instead of environmentally friendly straws. A large quantity of plastic waste is produced by coastal regions. We have 18 billion pounds of plastic waste entering the ocean annually from the coast alone. They last for up to 400 years and can cause tangible harm. For example, in 2018, microplastics have been found in 114 aquatic species and some are in oceans and deep trenches in the ocean. And they could be killing animals we've never even discovered or maybe endangered. As a result, action must be taken before damage is irreversible and destructive. So some suggestions I have to reduce plastic waste include restrictions on plastic straw use, such as fees for using plastic straws or even a complete ban entirely, and promotion of using biodegradable straws or reusable straws instead. So ordinances have been produced in over 300 cities for, that have limited plastic pollution. And so it is possible to implement it in the city as well. So another way to reduce plastic waste is encourage businesses to use metal or paper straws and set up favorable policies, such as tax credits to subsidize or even as a small incentive to encourage businesses to switch. Education throughout the community is also essential. It'll encourage them to switch away from plastic straws as they will understand the harm that they cause. Some ways you can do this include promoting flyers in libraries and schools, inspiring businesses by teaching them how to make the transition affordably, and events or presentations in public libraries to raise awareness. We need to take action now and preserve our home and not just for us, but for future generations who will face the consequences of our actions. Our mission, the mission with San Gabriel Mission has been here for over 200 years. Let's make sure our beautiful environment and our beautiful landscapes stay for another 250 years. If you want to learn more information, you can contact us on Facebook or Instagram at Stand Against Plastic Straws. And we also have a website, StandAgainstPlasticStraws.org. Thank you.
All right. Nicely done, thank you, thank you for coming to speak to us, Mr. Tran. Okay, those are all the speaker's request cards that I have. Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the San Gabriel City Council? Seeing none, I will close public comments. Next item?
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the City Council or audience requests separate discussion.
And I would like to pull Items B, E, and H. Bless you. Does anybody else have any other items they'd like to pull? No, not then, let's do a motion for the balance of the consent calendar items.
A motion to approve, except B, D, and H?
Uh, B, E, and H.
Uh, E and H.
And second.
Wait, you're approving the ones you pulled?
No.
No, except for.
I said except, I missed that, sorry.
Okay, motion and second, let's go to the board on those first.
Motion passes by 5-0.
Okay, on B, I have a quick question if Paula wouldn't mind coming up. I'm on the voucher list dated, let's see here, 7/19/19, page 12. Voucher number 123802. So, I wanted some clarification here because this is a relatively large amount. And also, I know that, and I don't think I've seen this particular line item before. Do you have any information about what this is for?
I will have to get back with you for that, but I believe it's probably our I-Bank loan. But I will find out for sure, let you know, and I will change the description going forward. So the next one will have a better description for you.
Right, so it's more clear. Because I think US Bank also is one of the banks that we use for our regular credit card purchases. But I'm assuming that's not what this is?
No.
Yeah. Okay, if you wouldn't mind, please, finding out and sending us an email. On Item E, let's see, is Greg here? Hi, or not Greg, sorry. Oh, yeah, Greg. Or Angela. So I wanted to understand, you know, what the exact, I mean, I know that there's the change orders and they specify the sort of line items, but some of it is a little bit in Public Works code with the abbreviations and so forth and so on. So can you just, is there a way to give a sort of a general description of what the expanded scope of work was that requires, you know, this additional payment?
Sure. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. When the project was already awarded and the contractor was mobilizing out to the site, it was also realized that several of the concrete ramps in the project area were not ADA compliant. So it was a change order to add several ramps to be rebuilt before we paved the streets. In addition to that, we added a couple cross gutters, extended a little bit of curb and gutter around the ramps to get a larger area corrected before paving. And we did extend a little bit of pavement to reach further down, I forget the street, but we expanded the pavement limits a little bit as well.
Okay, so you're saying ADA ramps that were already there were not compliant with ADA regulations?
I believe Angela could answer that better, she was the project manager. But I believe there was, I'm guessing, eight ramps were added. They may have been non-existent or non-compliant.
Don't be shy, Angela.
Hi, good evening, mayors and council members. Yes, those ADA accessory, ADA ramps are not compliant. So we have to make compliance to the ADA code.
Were those recently constructed, ADA ramps?
Um, no, they're old.
They were old ones?
Yeah, and they were just, they were missing from the plans, so.
Okay, okay, great, thank you for the clarification, that helps me a lot. Yeah, that's good. And then on Item G, no, no, sorry, H, sorry. So I was just curious if any of, any of us here on the council, you know, I know Councilmember Costando, you live, you know, on the street over from, from Bridge Street. It is a short street segment, but I can, I noticed here too that only the, only four houses out of the 13 that are, you know, part of the cul-de-sac there have signed this street closure form. So I'm curious as to whether there is, you know, like if it's four houses, maybe they could just get together and have a party at one of their houses rather than closing the street off and they're requesting six barricades. And then, you know, what about the other houses or the homes and residents there? If they don't want to participate, you know, they'll make it a little bit more difficult for them to come in and out during the street closure time. So I'm just, I just wanted to know if either staff or you have some further insight about this?
I don't know the details actually of the street closure, but he does do this periodically, at least once a year. I don't think there's ever been a problem. They've been very responsible about cleaning everything up, putting the barricades back for Public Works to pick up after the end of the event. And I know at one time he got his request in late and asked for my assistance, which I tried but couldn't get him, you know, so they ended up not having the party. But he's always been very mindful and responsible of having this block party. I do think more than just four families are involved in this.
Participate, okay.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure there wasn't just four, four ramp, four houses out of
Out of the 12 or whatever.
Yeah, the 12 or so that are there. Okay, great. Then with that, I would propose that you approve the balance of the consent calendar minus that voucher for the, that has the Yeah, well, the other vouchers I think are fine, but minus the 7/19/2019 voucher list. And so I'll move that we approve Items E, H, and B, except for the 7/19/19 voucher list.
Second.
All right, motion, second, let's go to the board.
Motion passes by 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
New business Item 6A, citywide speed hump policy consideration. Presentation will be made by Public Works Director and City Engineer, Divinc. I apologize. Public hearing, Item 5A, the adoption of Resolution Number 1931 to update the city's citywide master fee schedule. This item is continued from the July 16th, 2019, regular City Council meeting. Staff requests that public hearing be closed. The item will be rescheduled to be heard at a later time.
Okay, thank you, next item. I now close the public hearing.
Just a question, is this for a date certain, or is it just going to be rescheduled completely?
We will be re-noticing that and rescheduling it completely.
Okay. Next item, please.
Now, Item 6A, citywide speed hump policy consideration. Presentation by Greg Diving.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. We're here again to discuss the speed hump policy, the evolution of it. The ability of the history is on January 15, 2019, staff sought direction from the council to see if they would like staff to research and develop a speed hump policy, beginning with a pilot program that would be fully funded by adjacent property owners. Council instructed staff to proceed with this effort. On July 2nd of 2019, staff presented a proposed ordinance that was considered and commented on by council. The areas that council wanted clarified and/or added included revisions to the fee schedule, notification requirements, increasing the upper limit of the qualifying traffic counts, and consideration of the lifecycle costs. The revised ordinance that you have before you tonight addresses these areas and added some further clarification on the overall process. This effort began with a research request from a resident on Country Club Drive who proposed that the city, to the city, that they would fund the cost of speed humps between Hermosa Drive and Roses Road if the city would provide them. They cited chronic speeding and excessive traffic volume from drivers using Country Club Drive as a cut-through street between Delmore Avenue and Hermosa Drive or Lastuna's Drive. Country Club is a light residential street with a posted speed of 25 miles an hour and 20 miles an hour around the corner at Roses Road. The pavement condition on Country Club Drive has degraded to a pavement condition index of 10, meaning it is severely degraded pavement with a failing base material. At the last meeting, no residents from Country Club Drive were present. I thought the originating member had been informed of the meeting, but later learned that none of the residents were aware of this. I do expect that several of the residents are here tonight and possibly interested in speaking and may also be interested in additional discussion on non-speed hump solutions to speeding and traffic problems. This may include mounting radar speed signs that display speeding, San Gabriel Police Department speed indicating trailer, San Gabriel Police Department enforcement efforts, new signage, pavement restoration, rumble strips, et cetera. The proposed citywide speed hump policy is based on reviews of existing policies and documents from Diamond Bar, Norwalk, Pasadena, LA County, and LA County Fire, and the Institute of Traffic Engineers' speed hump guidance document. The policy is limited to residential streets only. There is a detailed advantages and disadvantages table provided with the staff report as Exhibit A. I'll quickly summarize them now. The advantages of placing speed humps are what you would expect: decreased vehicular speeds, reduced traffic volume, and less accidents. The disadvantages include increased emergency response time, traffic diverting to adjacent streets, increased accidents on those adjacent streets, increased noise and pollution from braking and accelerating at the speed hump locations, nuisance complaints from adjacent residents, liability exposure to the city, and the cost of providing and maintaining the humps. I'm requesting that City Council consider approval of the submitted speed hump policy and if adopted, further consider proceeding with a pilot project on Country Club Drive. Please let me know if you have any questions. And if you don't adopt this, I will be back here in four weeks to do this again.
All right, thank you, thank you Greg. We have a speaker's request card from Mr. Brian Jones on this item.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Brian Jones, I live on Country Club Drive, number 407. My wife Debbie and I have lived there for 42-plus years. I'm here really to give you an update on what the current feeling is about speed bumps on Country Club Drive. I'd have to say that really it has changed significantly since the last meeting. And I would like to point out that, yes, we would have been at the last meeting had we known the matter would have been discussed. But we did, in fact, avail ourselves of the wonderful video on YouTube, so we listened patiently through the whole proceedings. And I think we got the sense that we were probably facing pretty stiff headwinds if we were really going to follow through with the speed bumps. This led us to have a more detailed evaluation with the neighbors about the whole case surrounded, surrounding speed bumps and also the other things you alluded to, radar indicating speed signs, improvement in the safety conditions surrounding the corner of Roses Road and, and Country Club Drive, and also, yes, the surface of the, of the street itself, which is third world, as you pointed out. and also, yes, the surface of the, of the, of the street itself, which is third world, as you pointed out. So what we did was send out a ballot to people requesting specifically what their views were on these items. Basically, coming to the point, the speed humps are now three, four, and six against of the nine people that responded to our survey out of thirteen. So we got basically six people that were against it, only three were for it. In terms of the radar speed indicators, eight were, were for it, in other words, a hundred percent. The safety issue at Roses and Country Club Drive was also eight for zero. Everybody wanted it. Reservice the road, that was interesting. Seventy-five percent were in favor, twenty-five percent were not. The twenty-five percent were not concerned about speeding and traffic being diverted, all the obvious things. And there was also the option, leave everything as it is. And two people said, maybe that's okay. But it was a bit confusing in terms of the other answers. So the bottom line is then that, um, it would appear that, and also I might add, that we asked seriously to the residents, are you really up for funding this thing, particularly the speed bumps, which look like it could be thirty thousand dollars? When it was a question of putting your name on the survey, the answers were, well, maybe not. So the, the fact of the matter is that, at this point, in general, the fifty percent of the population would favor some sort of cost support, but now that would only relate to the radar speed indicators. The other people were, were against it. So that's the status. So I hate to come and say really the, the wonderful work that's been done so far is somewhat moot as far as possibly Country Club Drive is concerned. Nonetheless, finally, I would like to say how much we appreciate the effort that's gone into thinking about this, and maybe there will be a review later on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and thank you for doing a survey to provide us with, you know, the real-time information about the opinions of the residents there on Country Club Drive. So that being said, this is on the agenda. Much time has already been spent in formulating the policy, which the policy is a citywide policy. And if, um, you know, residents on any street would like to pursue it further, you know, in the future, then we would have, you know, guidelines and rules about what, you know, what needs to be done in order to make it happen. And so, you know, obviously, I think we should still go ahead and, and discuss and potentially implement the policy. Is there any questions or discussion among the council? Vice Mayor Machaca.
Greg? Just real briefly, um, there's a statement there that you would, it says how about determining, I'm sorry. My question is, how do you determine who the seventy-five percent of the residents fronting the roadway? Because, you know, like, for example, Country Club is really two blocks long. Would it be the whole street, but we also talked about maybe around the corner, the adjacent street? I wasn't quite sure what that seventy-five percent meant.
Okay. The... The parcels that would be responsible for voting and ultimately funding this would be the parcels that front a straight segment, so we don't go around corners. The speed humps are not allowed on curves, so we wouldn't consider going around the corner. But street, there would be segments that are considered. If the residents were interested along one block, it would be the residents on that one block. So Country Club, if it's two blocks long, they would need, if they were interested, they would submit an application with seventy-five percent of the voters on both blocks or one block. They could, it's, it's how the residents are applying to us for this package.
Okay, so if half the block has the hump, um, the other side that doesn't have it would not be taken into consideration? Because it's not...
Well, it's seventy-five percent of one block.
Of one block?
Yes.
So, okay, because it's two blocks, but maybe if they only have one side of the neighbors wanted it, the other side wouldn't even be, be polled.
It could be considered in one-block segments.
Okay. And then there was a comment with, with the forms that were established. It said, um, and I'm just gonna just quote part of it, says, "And acknowledge that my property may be assessed to fund the installation of the speed bump, speed humps on the forms." But the way it's written, everything would be paid upfront. So when would that take place? When would you have to assess and how would you assess? I mean, would you have to work with the county registrar, or what would you do to assess what's owed to the city?
Okay, that's a, I guess, a multi-part question. We wanted to have the applicants aware of the, um, the extent of liability in voting for this speed hump. Should they have voted, and, and the circumstances of going to actually an assessment would be almost bizarre, but we wanted to put it in there for our own protection. We could, in a weird situation hypothetically, get an application package, have the fees paid upfront, and maybe one neighbor was funding another neighbor who wasn't willing to pay. They had a falling out or something. I, I don't know really the, the weird scenarios that could occur in this. But we wanted to list it so that they would be aware that there is a certain level of financial responsibility in signing yes to this. And they could sign yes and then later reneg on it, and if it somehow still moved forward, possibly by council direction or some way, they might be financially responsible for it. Ultimately, um, in, in, in almost convenience and practical purpose, if something like that were to happen, it would be a lot easier to place a lien on someone's property than to actually go through a full assessment of this little district of a block. I don't think that's done by the county recorder. It would be through the county tax assessor's office. As far as funding that, the process moves forward with two items that are significant. There are the deposits for design and evaluation, hiring a speed study consultant and all that, and a larger deposit for the construction and construction administration of it. Those are prepaid items, and it does say in there the unspent funds would be returned back to the applicant or applicants. In that, there's a little bit of money available for us to put in the effort to pursue a lien or an assessment district and return less or no funds if that were needed for collection purposes.
Okay, okay. So, but typically, we probably will never have to do that unless there's something unusual. Because all the monies are upfront, so the city shouldn't be out.
It would be a very unusual circumstance. It just highlights the gravity of what they're signing yes for, a financial responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. So, yeah, regarding the application fee, you know, eight hundred dollars upfront. But if we deny the, uh, the case and then we have to refund eighty percent of that eight hundred dollars. So that means we only take hundred sixty dollars for all these time that staff is working on it. Do you think that's, that sounds very low? Can you change that? I mean, you know, maybe take fifty percent and refund fifty?
It, it can certainly be changed. It can be easily changed as council direction right now. Taking in an application is, that part's quite easy. Moving forward with the speed study, that, that's where it gets expensive. Now consultants are involved. But they're doing most of the work. For us to, to see the signatures, verify seventy percent of some amount, that's pretty easy. To go through and analyze the consultant's speed report, it's just a couple boxes of, does it meet the counts and the speed threshold? So processing it is fairly easy, and, um, to get to that point, the residents have funded not only the eight hundred, but made a, I think, a four thousand dollar deposit for all that consulting work. They're out that money, and to have a, a no answer at the end of it is kind of discouraging, so I think our...
So there's no refund for designed deposit that's four, four thousand dollars you're talking about?
The refund is the unspent portion of it. So if a consultant takes three thousand for a speed study, the residents will get back one thousand. But they will be paying quite a hefty fee that could result in a no, and I kind of didn't want to make it worse.
Okay, so, well, if they're still not happy about it and they want to repeal, so what will be the process or procedure for repealing?
If the answer comes back no, as, as our table indicates, it's inappropriate for speed humps to be on that street. The appeal really is to come back to council and ask for a special consideration. I don't know what the circumstances would be to override it. Could be anything. But it, the, the appeal process would be to come back to council. Because already at the Public Works level, we've ruled it no. So you're coming back to the same source for an appeal. It, I can't, I won't change my criteria.
Well, because we don't have that, you know, uh, in this tax yet. So I guess we have to come up maybe within thirty days of notice and, uh, how much the repeal fee, I guess the council has to decide later.
That could be a whole separate thing, or you could not make it, it's not an appealable decision. That's feasible, I think.
Okay.
That's a legal question.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? No? Um, I'd just like to thank Greg and your staff for taking the council's comments and, and direction into account. Uh, I noticed all the changes that we all requested are made in part of the policy. And for the residents on, on Country Club Drive too, you know, one of the things that stood out to me during this discussion is that the, um, what does it say here? The, uh... Am I looking in the right one? Yeah, the Institute of Transportation Engineers estimates that, um, that each speed bump, or each speed hump increases the potential response time of police and fire by up to nine point eight seconds per hump. You know, and that, you know, will be a really significant factor for, for myself. If you ever needed police or fire support, then, um, then certainly, you know, um, having a speed hump on your, on, on your street segment actually, you know, sort of decreases the, um, the response time that, um, you know, we would be able to reach, uh, you know, your residences if, if, if something terrible were happening. Um, but with that, I, I do think that the policy is, uh, you know, now pretty well thought out. You know, um, and, uh, and, and pretty thorough. Maybe there are a couple of other issues that, you know, yes, sir?
I just want to chime in on your comment. You, you had brought up response time in the last discussion. And our intent is that will be included in the public flyer that goes around to the adjacent streets, the reduced response time.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's significant if there's, you know, a fire on one side that can easily hop over to the other side of the street too. So, you know, that, that delay in response time sometimes is critical in terms of containing something like a fire to one property before it's spreading to the neighborhood. Anyway, um, I do think then, you know, we've got a very robust and, and thorough policy. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Let's go to the board.
Motion passed by vote of five zero.
Excellent, thank you. And, uh, please, you know, inform your, your neighbors and that, uh, we now, we now have a policy and, um, if the mood changes, you know, come back and let us know. You know where, you know where Greg works.
I do want to add one more thing.
Yes, sir.
To the residents, now that it seems moving forward with the speed hump is not happening at this time, but feel free to email me with other possible solutions to your traffic and speeding problem.
Excellent. Okay, yeah, uh, next item, please.
Consideration of a request from the Southern California Gas Company to adopt a resolution to support balanced energy solutions and local control of energy solutions. Presentation will be made by City Manager Lazaretto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I don't have much of a presentation tonight. Uh, but as, uh, most areas in the world, the state of California is trying to get greener in its policies and trying to reduce its carbon footprint. As part of that, a couple of bills were passed last year and signed into law by the governor. Our state legislature and the California Public Utilities Commission are looking at ways of meeting those very aggressive reduction goals. And as part of those are looking at things like requiring all homes that are built in California, as well as, as existing homes and businesses to potentially have to convert to electricity as their sole source for heating and cooking and all of their energy needs. As a result of that, the Southern California Gas Company has been approaching cities throughout Southern California with a request to support a more balanced energy solution. And the crux of their proposed resolution is keeping local control and having really consumer choice over what energy source that would be allowed. Um, on July second, uh, twenty nineteen, Helen Romero Shaw of the Southern California Gas Company made a presentation to council. And at the, the end of that meeting, the city council directed that staff bring, bring back a proposed resolution for consideration. I used a resolution that was approved by one of our adjacent cities. So it's very similar to what the gas company has proposed with one small change in one of the whereas's that talks about unnecessary increases in vulnerabilities by having a single energy delivery system. And that was something that was added by that adjacent city. Everything else is exactly as presented by the Southern California Gas Company. So with that, I would turn it over to the council for discussion and direction on how to move forward.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, council member Harrington, is that a...
I have comments. It was just left on. But yeah, so I support this. I mean, I'm always about choice. I'm about free markets. I'm, I'm not really big on, um, the state telling us how to, how, as a, not as a city, but as a consumer, how we need to behave. I, I like the fact we have, this is more choices. It, it just makes sense to me that, you know, let's let people choose how they want to live their lives. Let's let people choose how their utilities are. No matter what we say, this isn't, I mean, our electricity is mostly gas-based anyway. So when we say we're going to electricity, we're really still staying with gas. Um, so it make, to me, it's politics at the state level, and they're trying to jam it down into the, into, not even the local, into the individual choice level. So I support this resolution wholeheartedly.
All right, thank, thank you, John. Uh, councilor...
I agree with him.
Anybody else have a...
I do too.
Okay, well, that's good news. Great, thank you, thank you. Thank you for all your support. But anyway, besides SB one hundred by Senator DeLeong, but also there's SB fourteen seventy-seven and AB thirty-two thirty-two, they were all signed by governor in two thousand eighteen. So they all, you know, they all become laws now. So, uh, yeah, we have to find a balanced, um, energy policy because, you know, just to rely on one single source, uh, it's just not going to work. As a matter of fact, if you look at the inventories of greenhouse gas emission, um, electricities, you know, uh, in states, it's nine percent, and imported is six percent. So electricity is not clean. So, uh, but of course, you know, we have to, uh, come up with all these clinging energy. But the first one I think we have to work on is the, uh, transportation. That consists of forty-one percent of the pollution, and we try to move, you know, EV, the electric vehicles to, to the traffic, but also the trucks, trucks are most polluted vehicles. Uh, and there is a way to, um, have a clean fuel is from the bio gas and that transforming to, uh, renewable, renewable natural gas. And that's what the Southern California Gas Company is doing. By twenty thirty, they gonna achieve twenty percent of RNG. So I think this is the best solution and because it's affordable. Um, right now, I, I, I look at the, the cost for electricity and gas. Electricity is three times and, between three and five times more. So, you know, you ask our fixed income seniors to pay five times more for their utilities, they, they not going to survive. So, and another thing is in California alone, seventy-two thousand restaurants still rely on, uh, gas cooking. And, uh, in our city, you know, a couple hundred, uh, restaurants, they need to do gas cooking. Without gas cooking, it's just not gonna be the same. Especially Pollo Loco. I talked to Pollo Loco restaurant. Especially Pollo Loco, I talked to Pollo Loco restaurant, they say, hey, we gotta have gas. Are you electric? No, not gonna work. So anyway, we want a reliable and affordable energy. So I strongly support this resolution, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Leal. I think I share the sentiments of my colleagues here, but, you know, I also have, you know, a bit of a thing about, you know, being precise with drafting of language. And there, you know, whether it's our own ordinances or a contract I'm working on or what have you. And I'm, so I'd like to propose maybe just a couple of amendments to the resolution before us. One, because, you know, I don't want to make a state, because, I, you know, I think I've been made aware that, you know, of course, these resolutions are being used in Sacramento, you know, as between policymakers and agencies. And so with that, you know, I think we also just need to be cognizant too of how, you know, we represent ourselves and not just be making statements that are overbroad or, you know, potentially not even relevant to the, to the issue at hand. So with that, that's, that's the backdrop of why I actually feel that the second whereas clause in this resolution isn't necessary for the purposes of this resolution. It goes sort of beyond the scope, I guess, or of, I think, what we are most concerned about as a city. And so I propose to strike the second whereas clause in its entirety. I also propose to strike the last part of the, sixth whereas clause such that it would read only, you know, whereas building and vehicle technology mandates eliminate local control and customer choice. Because the rest of it, you know, I think it's actually beyond what we really know. I don't know what, how it really affects innovation, reliability, or, or costs. I guess that's, it's very probable that if you're being asked to convert, then, you know, you will have to bear some costs. But I think that, at the same time, you know, I want to keep this, this statement very simple. You know, and the more things you put into it, I think the more, the less impact it's actually going to have, even from a political standpoint, right? So I, and, and in keeping with that as well, I would also propose in the third line of the actual resolution to add the words "and consumer and business choice", so that the actual resolution would then read in its entirety that the city supports balanced energy solutions that provide it with the decision-making authority and resources needed to achieve the state's climate goals and opposes proposed state legislation and policy that eliminate local control. Insert "and consumer and business choice" by mandating technologies that can be used to power buildings and fuel vehicles and also meet or exceed emissions reductions regulations. To me, and I think as, as Councilmember Harrington had stated, this is really, you know, man, or regulations or mandates that go even beyond local control down to individual choice matters is, you know, pretty overreaching. And, and I think that that's, I think, one of the cruxes of why I think, you know, all of us are behind this. And I want to make it clear that, that yes, it's about local control to a certain extent. But to me, it's about individual choice, it's about consumer and business choice. You know, Councilmember Leal mentioned Pollo Loco, certainly, you know, they use a fire. They use a gas powered fire grills and I can think of many other businesses that would not be able to do what they do without, without gas. And so, so those are my proposed changes. And if council is open to it, I mean, we can discuss if there are any objection or, or questions about that. Yes, sir?
So just on the, on the second one, I really do want to make the statement that we're aware of what the state legislature is doing. And they keep coming up, they're coming with more and more ideas to do this. I like that language there. Maybe you want to tweak, I mean, I'm not sure about long haul trucking, that we really can support, so we're concerned with that. But I like the statement in, in general that the state legislature keeps doing this. No one is asking them to do this other than lobbyists. It is not the people, it's not local agencies, it's, I mean, it really is lobbyists. And we know who they are. So I want to make a statement back saying the people and the, and the local elected representatives are aware of this, we want you to stop doing it. So we can take out some of the wording, but I think the intent is there. That is one of the main reasons that, one of the main clauses I like.
Okay. Well, in that case, I mean, I would say, because the part of, to me, that is overbroad is this, is the, is the two clause that says to power buildings and public and private fleets, including transit and long haul trucking. You know, the rest of it, I agree, you know, to say that state legislature agencies are proposing laws and regulations that eliminate choice as a, as a strategy to achieve the state's climate goals. Because, to be honest with you, these regulations and rules by the CPUSC actually haven't even been, they're, they're set to be, you know, adopted before the end of the year, so they're in discussion right now. But I don't even know, I don't know what they're going to contain, I don't think anybody does.
I'll, I'll give you a good example when they say mandating technologies. We were looking at putting solar on our house, you know, to do electricity. Until I was doing that, I didn't realize that if there's a power outage in your neighborhood, you have to turn your solar off. You can't have an interlock device that would stop it feeding back even. So just because everyone else is on the grid, your power has to go out even if you're, even if you have solar. So I'm gonna have a generator, I already have a generator. So now I have to fire up the generator with solar panels sitting there in the middle of the day to run my, my air conditioning. That's what I'm talking about, mandating technologies. So that is, that does make a difference to me. These are real life things that they're saying, you can have solar, we're requiring you to have solar, but don't, you can't, it has to go off when, when Edison goes down. It's like, wait a minute, I did my part, I got solar, why are you mandating this? If it's safe and there's a way to do it, I couldn't do it if I wanted to. But I know people that have, it's easy to actually do it, it's just not legal. So one, that's the kind of things I'm like, how about we get some common sense in there? As far as buildings and like public and private fleets, I don't really care about that. I mean, like Metro's going all electric already, Foothill's doing the same thing, they have like an eight-year plan, it's not, and, but it's not because of mandates, it's because of the market is there.
Yeah, well, this is where, I mean, I feel like the, that's the part of the recital, you know, this whereas clauses are called recitals, right? That's overbroad, in my opinion, or sort of directed in a, in a way that is not the sort of main trucks, main crux of, of why we're concerned about these regulations.
So if we could just, even just stop at mandating technologies and then if you want to clear out to power buildings, public fleets, transit, long haul?
Yeah.
All right, I'm good with that. The actual specifics aren't as important to me as the fact that stop mandating how we live our lives.
Okay.
What about the as a strategy to achieve, does that stay or go?
I think that stays.
Stays.
And then the sixth one, I mean, I'm, I'm okay, I mean, it's like, it's kind of repetitive anyway.
Yeah. Anybody else? Oh, sorry, so.
Mayor, can I just kind of, you know, go over this?
Sure.
Because SB 1477 in the bill, actually, they use cap and trade money, fifty million every year for, come up with a new design, for instance, the new heat pump and also the device that can reduce the emission from residential buildings. So that's something the state is working on. But, you know, so far we haven't seen anything. But regarding the fleet, I just received an email regarding this new purchase by UPS. UPS gonna purchase a hundred and seventy million of renewable natural gas, you know, for all the, their trucks. So this is the, I, I, I think this is breaking news for, for all the trucking business people now. Because they cannot afford to have electric trucks, they cannot keep the, it's called the renewable DSOs. So, you know, this renewable natural gas is the best solution. Because that's the cheapest way for hauling. So I, I think we just have to look at all the, the cost of affordability and reliability of this energy, so.
Sure. So I have one other proposed amendment, since we're wordsmithing. It relates to the fourth recital. And I'm proposing just to strike the, the last clause in a highly competitive and increasingly regional and global marketplace. So that that recital would only read, whereas the need for clean, affordable and reliable energy to attract and retain local businesses, create jobs and spur economic development is vital to our city's success. Again, I just feel mentioning of regional and global marketplace is unnecessary in this context and, yeah, okay. All right then, I will move to approve as amended. Oh, no, the, the second, the last part of it is, is being deleted, so that it now only reads, it now only reads whereas building and vehicle technology mandates eliminate local control and customer choice. And we are inserting, you know, consumer and business choice as part of the actual resolution itself. You know, stating that these types of policies eliminate local control and consumer and business choice by mandating technologies. So my motion to, to approve as amended still stands, is there a second?
A second.
I think Councilmember Costanzo, a second, motion and second, let's go to the board.
Motion passed by a vote of five zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Public comment, comments are limited to three minutes. If you wish to address the city council, we request that you please complete a speaker's request card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Is there any member of the public who would like to address city council? Oh, okay, Helen Romero Shaw. Please, please come up and speak on the record.
Helen Romero Shaw, Public Affairs Manager, Southern California Gas Company. I just want to thank the city council and I appreciate the discussion. And I look for in getting the, the, the different resolution. But I, I do appreciate that customer choice and local control are, are the main drivers. And, and so I think the city council made their position very clear, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Next, next item.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have mixed emotions tonight about announcing that on September the 3rd, it's highly likely we'll have a new finance director on board. He'll be starting that day, will be his first day, and so we will be introducing him to the council and the community. I say mixed emotions because although Paula Chamberlain will be staying on board for at least a few weeks or a couple of months to help with special projects, I didn't want to spend that night thanking her and sort of overlapping our new finance director's first day and overshadowing that. So I wanted to take a moment for Paula's last meeting as our interim finance director to thank her publicly and personally for all of her help. Paula stepped in, as you all know, in a very difficult, critical time in San Gabriel's recent history. And I think more than just her skills at her core efficiencies and competencies and being a, an really excellent finance director, she created trust with the council and she got along with the department heads quicker than anybody I've ever seen. I mean, she got in there and got to know each one of them, got them to be a part of something that hadn't been done before. And really a testament to her skills, everybody in her staff was tasked with doing more than they had in the past and they all got behind it and did it very happily and quickly and learned quite a bit. So I think from the city's perspective, I'd like to take a chance to thank her, but also personally, in a very difficult time for me as a manager, she came in and graciously helped. And one of the things I mentioned to the council when council asked how I came up with Paula when I recommended her, I said that one of the things about Paula is that we'll pay her for forty hours and she'll work eighty. I wasn't exaggerating, and I think you can ask everybody here who came in on a Saturday or a Sunday or was here late at night, that Paula was here way more than sixty or eighty hours a week. And so for that and all of the other things that she's done, I want to take a moment to thank her for everything.
I just want to thank everyone here, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come in and work, it's been very nice. It's been a lot of work, but I've enjoyed it and I, everyone I've got to know is very nice. You've got an excellent team here, my department, everyone is wonderful, the department heads are wonderful. It's really a good place to work, so thank you.
Thank you, Paula. So will we have another opportunity, I mean, to, to do the formal, formal goodbyes, or is this it?
We can do as many formal goodbyes as you all like. But I fear that we're gonna be working with her on a special project or two and then she'll end up riding off into the sunset without having a, maybe a night like this.
I mean, the nine sixty that is up when, at the end of the fiscal year, right?
The nine sixty is up at the end of the fiscal year, but I'm trying to be cognizant of her life and retirement and spending time with her husband and family.
Okay.
And I'm trying to use her as much as she will allow without imposing more on her than I already have.
Okay, well, then maybe, hopefully Paula, when, when these, these special projects hopefully wrap up or you're able to at least hand them off to our new finance director, you'll come back so we can at least, you know, put a bow on it, so to speak. Thank you. Okay, next item.
Council comments and conference and meeting reports.
Let's start with Councilmember Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to thank the staff and especially the police for the well and the fire, for the national out. It was an excellent event, well attended. It was, it was just great to see the public get out there and really focus on, you know, community and focus on a great event like that. So I just want to thank staff and everyone involved, so much appreciated.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Machaca.
I agree again with Councilmember Harrington, it was a great event and it gets better and better every year and appreciate those who volunteer in the dunk tank, like, great. And, no. But anyway, I, I just wanted to share, I, I felt like it was kind of a groundbreaking marathon for me. I attended the YMCA groundbreaking that they have for the new children's center. There was a one point eight million grant that was secured by Assemblymember Ed Chow. And this children's center will be a regional benefit to, to everyone. There was quite a few people from different cities. So it was just exciting to have that. That center is going to be in, in our community and it was just a really nice celebration. So I was happy to be there representing. And then there was the Rubio Village and quite a few of us were there. It's the formal San Gabriel Lane bowling alley and after fifteen years, we finally will have some retail space, a hundred and fifty-nine residential units, three town homes, a hundred and fifty-six apartments and twelve units set aside for affordable housing. So I really believe that's going to kick off, hopefully, our San Gabriel Boulevard. I think it's going to look very, very different. I know some people who live down the street who are very pleased to see some changes and looking forward to the retail that's going to be there. And then lastly, Marshall Satellite Police Station, another groundbreaking, not, not as, with shovels as much, but still, there's a lot of work that was put there and a lot of effort by your team chiefs. So it was exciting to be there and, you know, we'll have, was it the Traffic Bureau and the Select Administrative and Operational Functions. And so it is located in a, in a, in the community that I think welcomes the police presence and has been requesting that presence for, you know, for decades, so it's, So it's very strategic, and it's just exciting to be right next to Marshall Park. So, thank you again, chief. And then lastly, I'm just going to mention something that, you know, most people probably didn't, wasn't aware, except for Councilmember Shin Ho Lau and myself. The library hosted a Beatles cover band, and it was actually quite exciting. It was more exciting, I think, for the older people like myself, who know about the Beatles, the little kids, it was funny. The parents were there, and the kids were on the computers playing, you know, Dora the Explorer and all this stuff. But the adults, we were real excited, and we were very engaged, and we all had a really good time. And I just wanted to congratulate Julie Sorenton and her team for bringing that band there. It was live, they were very good. The library was packed, there was just a lot of people there. And, you know, I just think that the library should, should get recognized for doing something that, very atypical for a library to do. So, you know, keep your eyes out for those type of little gems that they do for us. And then lastly, as Captain Valdez mentioned, I am on the board for La Casa, and I just wanted to put a little plug for La Casa Preschool. There is open enrollment. We are still accepting young students, let's see, children from two point nine months old through five years old. And tuition is based on income levels from the family. But, you know, please keep in mind, if people are still looking for preschools, you know, we have La Casa. So appreciate everyone's support. And that's all.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Machaca. Councilmember Costanzo.
Thank you, Mayor Poo. There's a lot going on in San Gabriel, certainly, and a lot to be proud of. So I think all of those that are involved in keeping us moving forward in a positive way. I did recently have a Board of Trustees mosquito vector control meeting, one of the boards that I sit on proudly on August ninth. But I did want to inform you that the district has confirmed its first two thousand nineteen sample of mosquitoes carrying West Nile virus in Baldwin Park, so which is a city not too far from us. West Nile virus is present in bird and mosquito populations throughout the San Gabriel Valley, and the district will continue to trap and test mosquitoes for diseases and manage all known sources of stagnant water. Please contact the district if you do find a dead bird, and they'll come out and test it. And also, as the season continues to heat up, I want to remind everybody to toss any, toss and tip any stagnant water around their homes or their neighbor's home, and to use repellent to stop mosquitoes from biting. So this is very important, I don't want to see anybody getting sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Costanzo. Councilmember Leal.
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, it's been a very busy but exciting month, all these events, you know, and, but also I attend, well, it's just two days ago, I attend the Community Safety Seminar at Rosemead Community Center, and six hundred people show up. The guest speaker is the County Sheriff, Alex Vera Nueva. So the community is very concerned with the property crimes nowadays, so he did a great job, taught us how to prevent all these unnecessary crimes. But also Captain Valdez was there, so he's talking about the 411 in City of San Gabriel and talking to our police chief face to face, and so that was good news. Hopefully, we can bring in more residents come to a 411 meeting. And about a week ago, I went to Pittsburgh and did this national summit on infrastructure. So I thought, oh, wow, this is good, you know, I was invited, I said, oh, maybe we can bring some funding from the current administration that we can fix our infrastructure. But it's not exactly, but Pittsburgh, I never been there, it was the, I always think it's the most beautiful city in the United States. My past, you know, yeah, the old picture about Pittsburgh is old and dirty and rusty because it's a town of the steel, but actually, it's so gorgeous. I just couldn't believe it, it's so clean, and they have more than four hundred fifty bridges, you know, just, it really surprised me. But right now, they're not doing too much construction, but Uber invests one billion dollars in Pittsburgh, so they have a fifty robotic company. They want to develop the, one of the best autonomous cars in Pittsburgh. So this is, this is something that I learned. And also, a week ago, I attend this emerging tech summit at Washington DC, and this is from federal governments, how they use the new technology. For instance, the Department of Health and Human Services, they're using blockchains. Oh, I thought, wow, wow, this is something very interesting. I hardly know anything about this technology. But anyway, they use for hundred thousand contracts, you know, for that department. And also, the, the US Census Bureau and IRS, they use, it's called intern, artificial intelligence to handle all these, you know, complicated and huge data, especially, they can find out whose report on this travel expenses is abnormal. So using AI to detect that, so it'd be, yeah, I think it makes sense, you know, we just have to use the technology. But most impressive, this is from VA Hospital, they have 3D printing. 3D printing, they can print a brain and an organ, and they can find where is the tumor. So print it, and the doctor can show it to the patient, and, you know, how, explain how he's going to do the operation, how he's going to carve out the tumor, and this is truly amazing. But I think applied to our city business, you know, we can use 3D printing in the future instead of just send us the 2D blueprints. Now, you know, if this technology is more popular, we can ask them to bring the model, you know, the 3D printing, we can see it right away what kind of a developed project we're going to be. So this is really very fascinating, and so I really enjoy both conferences.
All right. Thank you. As Councilmember Leal said, it's been a long time since we had a meeting, so there is a lot to report. Just wanted to fill in some of the blanks that some of my colleagues didn't mention, members of the public. On July eighteenth, we had a meeting with Supervisor Barker's office and her staff. Thanks to all the staff, all the council was there as well. It was a very productive and informative meeting. Seven nineteen, there was a meeting that was called by Assemblymember Chow and Senator Rubio regarding the seven-ten stubs. Director John Bolinsky from Caltrans was also there, as well as members of Metro. So that is an ongoing conversation that we will continue to monitor. Cal State LA is also very much interested, and also the city of Los Angeles, since actually the stub, South Stub is the one that we're most concerned with, is actually in, part of it is in the city of Los Angeles as well. July twenty-fourth, I just wanted to mention this because, you know, I didn't post about it, and I don't know how much media there was, but there is a new sign out here in Plaza Park. So on that morning, I attended the dedication of a new sign for the Old Spanish Road. And I don't know, I see Arminé nodding her head. You know, frankly, I learned a lot at this little ceremony. Apparently, apparently, the Old Spanish Road is one of those historical trails, you know, like the Deansa Trail, like El Camino Real. And the thing that I didn't know before is that Mission Road, right here, leading up to the Mission, is the only place that any of those history buffs were aware of, where all three trails merge into one. So it's, that, that stretch of road actually is paved over the old trail, you know, you can imagine the kind of like, just a dusty trail that horses and, horses and donkeys and, you know, carriages used to go over. So it's both, it's the Old Spanish Road, the, it's El Camino Real and the Deansa Trail. And so there's a new sign there that's in three different languages, actually. It's in English, Chinese, and Spanish to educate the public about, about the Old Spanish Road. So that was actually a pretty, pretty educational morning. Seven twenty-eight was Judy Chu's Congressional Leadership Awards, and from San Gabriel, the Chinese Parents Association for the Disabled was, received the award from Congresswoman Chu's office. And they used to be in Alhambra, but they are now subleasing from AYC, as I understand it. So that's why they are a member of our San Gabriel community, and it was great to meet a lot of them. It's an association of parents whose families have children with disabilities, and so it's a, you know, support network for themselves, is also a resource for those, for those children. Eight one nineteen was Fairview Con. National Night Out was mentioned on August sixth. August seventh was the Rubio Village Groundbreaking. August eighth was the Marshall Park Police Satellite Station. Also on August eighth, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, but the San Gabriel Valley COG Board had a special meeting and voted to, it's going to be a little bit complicated, but I think it's important for us. The COG has voted to utilize what's known as subregional equity funds. Now, subregional equity funds is a portion of Measure M funds. Utilize subregional equity funds to help complete the Gold Line to, the Gold Line Foothill Extension to Pomona. I think I'd like to share that, you know, although Metro's been very ambitious, especially with its twenty-eight for twenty-eight initiative, a lot of the projects are, throughout the region, are coming up with, with gaps in funding, like shortfall in terms of what the cost estimates are to build them and, and the revenue that will be available. So all the subregions, San Gabriel Valley being one of them, are, is being asked to kick in these subregional equity funds, which would have been a separate line item that the subregion, you know, would have been able to use on whatever transportation projects that, you know, that they desired. So in a way, it's kind of like allocating, dedicating what would have been subregional general fund dollars for transportation and dedicating them to this one project, which is the Gold Line Extension, I think, right now from Laverne, I think, to Pomona, because even just that segment had a one hundred and twenty-six million dollar shortfall. Now, these funds are funds of last resort, meaning if other funds become available or then, or the total project costs, you know, don't require all that funding, then, then those funds would be returned back to the COG. We could still use them for some of our other subregional projects. But just wanted to report on that because I think it's a major, it's a major thing. As you know, I mean, I, you know, my own, it's sort of like, you know, you kind of have to do it because if the, if Metro were, needed to go out to, to rebid that project, you know, the cost estimate would only have been greater, which would have meant that probably that that leg of the regional transportation network would just not get built. And we know how that feels when, when there's a portion of your regional transportation network that's never built. So, anyway, it is precedent setting, by the way. I mean, this has not been done before where these, I mean, obviously Measure M isn't that old, but, but use of the subregional equity funds to backfill projects which were originally just promised straight out under Measure M is a, it's a new thing that Metro is doing. But I'm assured that we are not alone in terms of being a subregion that is asked to contribute these subregional equity funds for these measure, for these metro projects. The August ninth was the San Gabriel Historical Association Dinner. A couple of us were there, and that was a really lovely evening, despite me getting razzed by the performer, which I still maintain was a really good throw. He just moved his hand to conveniently, to conveniently miss the ball. On eight fifteen last week, we had our, another census meeting, and so I appreciate the efforts of Arminé and her staff, as well as John Fu, and Vice Mayor Machaca was also there. We're adopting the campaign name of We Count SG, and we will work to also translate that into Spanish, Chinese, and Vietnamese in meaningful ways, because I think just doing a straight translation in Chinese just wouldn't have the same effect. So, so pulling together the complete Cal Committee is going to be a pretty huge undertaking, so appreciate the efforts of staff in doing that. You know, the sort of idea behind We Count is that, you know, we as a community need to stand up and be counted and to be, to be represented. It's almost like, you know, being voted, because if we don't participate in the census, then, you know, first of all, we're not getting a fair and accurate picture of our population. But secondly, you know, we're almost like relinquishing our own representation in terms of your numbers, right? Your, your population, your, you know, regional planning is based on these numbers, all sorts of things. Funding, obviously, is also tied to these numbers, so, so it does behoove us to have a fair, accurate, and complete count. And I think we are also including, we're also going to, we're going to say, you know, we're striving for a fair, accurate, and inclusive count. Lastly, let's see here. Lastly, there wasn't, I think there's been maybe some city posts about this, but I just wanted to highlight that the Mission Playhouse has now been placed on the National Register of Historic Places. So that is much credit to, I think, our commission, right? Our, I know Senia was involved, Rebecca and Arminé, you and your teams were involved as well with the application and seeing this through. So, you know, this is a really great thing to be proud of. Another thing, you know, we started the night off honoring a lot of the history contributions that families have made to the community, and having yet another one of our city facilities on the National Register of Historic Places kind of highlights this, the sort of, the specialness of the city of San Gabriel. So thanks to the staff and thanks to the community members who worked on putting this application together and getting, making this happen, it does, I guess, give us some access to potential funding sources to do the maintenance and restoration of an asset like this. And because of the, all those things, I'll save the announcement for dumplings and beer for our next council meeting, since we still have a couple before then. Tonight, we are adjourning, adjourning the meeting in memory of Frank Claro, owner of Claro's Italian Markets. The next regular, regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September third, two thousand and nineteen, at six thirty PM. Thank you, and we're adjourned.